Started. Go, come on in, you're good. We want to welcome everybody out and thank everybody for coming to our February 11th School Board meeting for Springdale Schools. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Madeline Sisnasi to the podium. Hope that it didn't butcher that too badly. If you'd join her and stay with me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, I'm Madeline Sisnasi from the Don Tyson School of Innovation. I'm gonna start with a little bit of an intro. I am a senior at the Don Tyson School of Innovation. I've been there since the sixth grade, but I was formerly at Walter Turnbull Elementary and Harp Elementary. So I'm Springdale through and through. I serve as our Student Council President. I also serve as a leader and on our campus for many different reasons, as an ambassador, or recycling club, or all of those different things, but my favorite part is really just being a part of this community and really learning and growing as a Springdale resident.
I feel like we should just trade spots. Okay, so tell us, future plans?
Yes, so I plan on attending Columbia University in the city of New York this fall. I'm very excited, I applied early decision and that's where I wanna go.
And what are we hoping to do after that?
So, the plan is to study American Studies, which is the study of the United States history, culture, art, literature, and then it's pre-law. So the goal is to go to law school and pursue a law degree and then be a civil rights attorney. That is the goal right now, but I am fully willing to adjust and change as the world changes as well.
I have no doubt. Board, have questions for Ms. Madeline?
I feel like we've kind of watched you grow up, just because you have been an ambassador. Thank you, I can't get that out, for Don Tyson, basically since you got there. I remember the first time you took us all around and... What would you tell a student that's thinking about going to Don Tyson? What would you, how would you encourage them?
Yeah, so I remember in like the fourth and fifth grade, when we kind of heard rumors around Springdale about, you know, this school, it's in the John Center, we have no idea what's happening there, everyone was like really curious about what being a DT SOI student looked like. And as we moved onto our campus, I kind of saw more things. People kind of talked about these programs and this accelerated learning and this kind of new approach with CBG and this kind of different mindset when it comes to education. And I think if I were to sit down with a student in that stage as well, I would tell them, if you are looking for a place to become yourself, understand your goals and missions as a person, and also how you can grow and learn with this collective group. I think if you look at anybody from that first sixth grade class that I was a part of, you can definitely tell that SOI, DT SOI specifically, has helped us learn what we want to do. And I think it's all about really channeling that education mindset and kind of taking ownership of that journey.
I think we need a commercial, Dan.
Well, she could probably film that. I mean, extracurricular activities, AV tech, film producer, videographer, writer, talent, and you're gonna be an attorney, but your favorite class is tech and film. What are you gonna do with all that creative talent?
Well, I think what's really important with my passions with AV tech and film is I'm telling stories. My biggest goal in life is to express things that people are scared to and share stories that people need to hear. So when I say my favorite extracurriculars are AV tech and film and all of these like very creative fields, I'm not doing it just because I get to make fun videos, but I'm telling something broader than just, oh, this was fun. No, I'm bringing emotion to something, or I'm sharing important stories from our community. I'm currently kind of late for my job at the Springdale Athletic Foundation, I film basketball too, but I just like to share things that are important to our community. And I like to really bring life to things that people don't always get to see.
I think she's gonna be on the nightly news. Something. Anybody else? Mom and Dad?
No, my mother is working right now at the hospital, so I am letting her do her job, but she's definitely gonna watch this livestream. I'm gonna make her sit down and watch it with me.
Good job, Mom, when you watch this.
Yeah.
Will come back and let us know how you do?
Absolutely, I love it here.
Much for coming and for all you've done.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, what a great way to start a meeting. That brings us to our agenda for tonight, do we have any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions about that?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us to presentation by Dr. Cleveland.
Okay, well, thank you. I tell you, we've got some wonderful celebrations tonight, and we've got some ladies that, right? Some awesome ladies, the national producers out there, but we're gonna ask Coach Fimple to do that, even though I would really like to do it, the athletic director wants to do it.
Good evening, Board. Let me click this up real quick. All right, Springdale Cheer Team and Harbor Dance Team have showcased their incredible talent and dedication by excelling in the national competition. Their hard work, passion, and perseverance have set them apart, demonstrating excellence on a grand stage. They have represented the Springdale School District with pride. These teams continue to push boundaries and inspire with their outstanding performances. I give to you Coach Hardcastle and the Springdale High School Cheer Team.
Well, we just wanna, yeah, hey, come on down and...
Both sides, Jerry.
There you go. The girls split just a little bit, so they can just kind of see, there you go. So, thank you for having us here tonight. It really means a lot to us for you guys to take some time out of your busy schedules and your agenda to recognize their hard work and accomplishments. This is a school personal best for a Nationals presentation to... We received the bronze medal in what they call medium coed game day, so we had 25 people on the mat, which includes two mascots. We received, not only did we get third place, but we are also recognized among all the teams in our division, which there were 18, from Montana, New York, New Jersey, all over. We also got recognized for having the best sideline spirit and also having the best use of mascots in our routine. So, it was a really exciting time, and it's been great for me as a coach to watch them grow and develop and for them to really buy into what we call the legacy that we're building at Springdale High School Cheer, and they have worked so hard in just exceeding expectations. And our goal next year is to bring home the big one.
Where was the competition?
It's held in Dallas.
Does anybody want to give a few words on what you're, how, what you thought of the experience?
Seniors, anybody? Destiny, all right, come on.
Destiny's one of our captains.
I was about to say, I bet she's a captain.
Hi, my name's Destiny, I am the co-competition captain. I've only been on Springdale for two years, and last year we did come home with fifth, but just moving from fifth to third is just honestly an amazing way to end my senior year. It wasn't the way I wanted, but I'm so glad that we came with the medal, and we were close last year, but we were closer this year. So I'm really proud of the team and just how far we came. I know the year before, I think 20th, right?
Yeah, so first time we went 20th.
20th, and then second time, fifth, and then this time, third. So I'm really proud of each and every person that's been on the mat, and I'm glad I ended my senior year this way, so, yeah.
Trending in the right direction.
All right, ladies, if you'll just go right out this door, I hear they'll get your picture. They're on the way to get on the bus with Coach Matthews and go to a basketball game.
Congratulations, great job.
Yes. They're all right. Next, for the Board, we'd like to introduce Coach Jody Northcutt and Harbor Dance.
All right, so Clint told me that I had as long to speak as I wanted, so I thought, no. So I have got a long story planned, no. So, good evening. I am so incredibly proud to stand here before you today to celebrate a significant achievement in Harbor history. The Harbor Silver Stars earned second place in the Large Kick D1 Division at the UDA Nationals Competition. This accomplishment reflects their hard work, their dedication, and the passion that they have put in throughout this season. But beyond just the medals that they're wearing around their neck and their scores, what makes this victory so meaningful is the unwavering support of the Springdale community. From the parents who cheered us on, to the people who believed in us, the administration and the athletic department that said we could reach our goals, and to the fans who believed in us every step of the way, it was truly a team effort. It wasn't just one person or one idea that made us achieve this victory. We've really seen firsthand how strong the community can lift up our athletes and motivate them to achieve more than whatever, what they even thought was possible. This achievement speaks volumes about the strength of the Harbor Silver Stars program, but we've also learned that it's not just about competition. It's about growth, it's about discipline, it's about creating a culture and a sense of unity and pride. Our athletes not only excel on the dance floor, but they also embody the values of teamwork, resilience, and integrity that really make them who they are today. These athletes competed and gave their all, they battled through flu, they battled through all of the things while we were in Orlando, but their hard work paid off, and for that, I'm so incredibly proud of each one of them. They've proven that dedication, perseverance, and a deep commitment to one another can truly lead the team to a great success. So this is just one milestone in a chapter of a book that we're writing together, and I can't wait to continue to move this program forward and find even more success and growth in our future. And we are really just grateful for everybody that believed in us along the way and helped make it possible. But we are going to keep pushing forward, and we believe that we are building a program that will really be stronger than ever. And then, are you gonna speak to? Both of my officers would like to say a word.
Hello, my name is Brooklyn Gibson, I'm a junior and I'm the captain of the Silver Stars this year. I just wanted to say thank you so much for supporting us throughout this whole season and just constantly. We've been able to accomplish so much, starting from rebuilding a foundation with a culture that has so many values, and we just love each other so much, all the way to getting second nationally, and we're super excited. I'm proud of each and every one of you, but thank you guys so much for being there for us and just supporting us the whole way.
Hi, my name is Reagan Bell, and I'm the first lieutenant on the dance team this year. And once again, just to reiterate, reiterate what they said, thank you so much, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for you guys. And this truly is a dream come true for all of us, and we're just looking forward to building on this new foundation that Coach Jody has started for us. And I'm so excited, we're all so excited, and next year, we're going for first place.
So, we're gonna have a lot of performers next year.
Thank you.
Do you have sophomores too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Sophomores, sophomores, juniors and seniors this year. I think there are 15? No. There's two, and then there's 12.
You'll have a lot of...
Yeah, yeah. With a lot of seniors next year, but I think we'll graduate 16 total from our program this year.
Big goals for next year.
Very big goals for next year.
I'm very proud of all of you.
You?
Really fun to watch.
The videos weren't all right.
Yeah, yeah, no, they were, they did a great job, it was definitely, they left it on the floor. But thank you for your support and for really helping us build this program and supporting us the whole way.
Hold up that trophy, let's get a picture.
Hold it up.
We're not in the picture, y'all standing in front of us. We didn't do anything. Oh, yeah, you have to have good lighting.
Good job. Good job. Thank you, ladies. And last, we have March 4th through the 8th, put that in your calendars, 'cause it's definitely in mine, it wakes me up at night about 2:00 AM. We are hosting the 6A Girls and Boys State Tournament. Just wrote a little bit about this, Springdale Public Schools is honored to host the 6A Girls and Boys State Tournament at Springdale High School. We're excited to welcome teams, fans, and supporters to our campus from around Arkansas, and look forward to presenting a tournament that will both be competitive and memorable, hopefully really good for our sides. Our community is ready to showcase our hospitality and passion for high school basketball, making this a truly special event for everyone involved. So it's March 4th through the 8th, and again, that'll be a huge deal for our community and our social, everything downtown, Chamber of Commerce, all that. Any questions that you need from me about it?
Where and when will it state championship?
It's actually in Hot Springs, we'll play all the way to the semifinals. So at Saturday, there'll be a session where there's a game at 12 and a game at 1:30, girls, boys. That'll put the first two in, and then it'll come back at 6 o'clock after we clean the gym, there's a game at 6:00 and 7:30, and that's the other two. So we'll go all the way to the very end of it, and it'll be down in Hot Springs. I think it's on Saturday, Coach Burnett, of course, a great resource to have for, I think it's Saturday, they play the 6A Girls and Boys, both on Saturday down in Hot Springs. Anything else? Thank you, Board, appreciate it. Like I said, those two teams there, they did a tremendous job, they're great ambassadors and they're lovely ladies. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to add, ask Ms. Fink to come forward.
Cabot and kids, come join.
All these trophies.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland. Each year, Arkansas Economics hosts a stock market game, and they divide our states into regions, and they invite teams to participate in the stock market game, where they invite our students to invest $100,000 virtually into the stock market. And this year, I am excited to announce that TG Smith Elementary School took first and second place in the stock market game. And our first, yes? Our first-place team, they were able to attend a luncheon in Little Rock, and they were awarded, I believe, $125 monetary award, so I'm gonna let Ms. Cabot and her students talk about their experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fink, and thank you, Board, for having us today. As Ms. Fink said, I am Jamie Cabot, and I am at TG Smith Elementary. I teach GT and East there, and I have the privilege of working with these kids, and it's always very exciting to me to give them these opportunities. One of the things that I love about it is it's a simulation, and it's actually not a game. And so it is $100,000 of virtual money, and the kids have learned so much with portfolios, diversification, and everything. And I see remarkable growth every year whenever we are able to do this. So I want to introduce to you our first-place team. It is Uriah Gibson, here in the red hat, and Sakai Sullivan, they are fifth graders, and they actually won first place in the largest region in Arkansas, which is exciting. And as Ms. Fink said, they got $125 of real money that they got to split, and you can ask them in a minute what they, what they want to do with that. But here's what's impressive about it, they gained, they had a net equity gain of over 24% in three months, which was incredible. That is over $14,000. They diligently watched the markets, and I believe that Sakai will tell you that he actually lost sleep over this. And then I want to introduce you to Genesis Rivas and Annabelle Van Leer. They are our second-place winners in the stock market. They had a gain of over 22%, which in, it was over $6,000, almost $7,000 from September to December. What was impressive about these ladies is that they had the most diverse portfolio. I mean, they had five pages, they had over 35 stocks that they had invested in and believed in, so it was really impressive to see that. I am very proud of both of our teams and just truly proud of what they have learned and accomplished, and I'm pretty sure if you want to ask them any questions, they may have some comments for you, but thank you so much for having us.
Mom and dads, any parents here?
Do, we have parents here.
I have a question. So did, what was the stock for each of you? What was the stock that most impressed you?
I would have to say IONQ. But that one gained us $10,000.
So, you said Navidea, is that right? IONQ is what it was.
So, I would say that one, it definitely was one that pushed us over the edge to help us win, but Navideo was also another one that helped us, and Navideo just kind of stayed up the whole entire time, it was just up, and we weren't losing anything from it, and so it was just up, and we kind of stayed there, and it was because that is what kind of kept us steady.
Girls, did you have one that you really liked, or? Walmart, wow.
Yeah, and Annabelle, do you, why Walmart? You told me really well yesterday.
So are y'all gonna start giving your parents advice on shops?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Going to continue our celebrations. I think every year, I get to stand up here before you and celebrate another Presidential Award winner. This year, I want to congratulate Jamie Ramsey, she's a third-grade teacher at Jim D. Rollins Elementary School. She is the 2022 recipient of the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science and Teaching. She is actually the 12th recipient for Springdale Public Schools to receive this exemplary honor. Each year, through the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, the President of the United States recognizes outstanding educators from across the country who teach science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. At either an elementary or secondary grade level, recipients of the Presidential Award represent the best of STEM education, demonstrating deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable student success. Receiving a Presidential Award can change a teacher's life in addition to receiving the honor of a lifetime each awardee receives, a certificate signed by the President of the United States, a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation, an all-expense trip paid to a recognition event which includes an award ceremony and opportunities to meet with policymakers, and a series of professional development activities, and access to an alumni network and the opportunity to build partnerships with colleagues from across the nation. So congratulations to Jamie Ramsey, our PAE MST Award recipient.
Good evening, how are y'all today? What questions do you have?
Tell us a little bit about the process.
Absolutely. So I applied in 2021 and 2022, so I've waited three years to hear. So it's been a long waiting process. It was a series of videos, I had to have letters of recommendation, it was an intensive review process where I had to watch my videos, and I had to do timestamps and narratives of about what I did and why I did it and how I do it differently. And so it was a very long process, but the thing I loved the most about it, whether I won or not, 'cause I've been waiting three years, I feel like the teacher I was before and the teacher I was after that reflection process was completely different, because it forced me to really look at who I was and what I was doing and why I was doing it. And I started at Smith as an MAT intern, and then I was at Monitor, and then I got the opportunity to open Rollins. So it really was a culmination of me being in Springdale Schools and who I am as a teacher. So I think that was the best part of it.
Have you done the traveling and the...
I have not. So we, they announced it the first week of January, so I don't know when I'll go, but whenever I do, I'm looking forward just to meeting people and just connecting. Yes. Yes.
It was worth it.
Absolutely, yeah. I think... What is it? That's a great question. So it's... So it's a cycle. So every year, there's a K through 6 cycle and then the next year, it's a 7th through 12th grade. And it has to funnel through, the state government has to funnel through the national government. And so there's just been a lot happening in our government. And so.
Runs a little slow.
Yeah. So they announced three years where the 2021, the 2022, and 2023 in January of this year. Yeah.
Do they have an overall winner, like nationally?
They don't. So we apply at the state level and then the state level usually brings forward three science and three mathematics awards to go to the national level. And then the national level goes through every single state and has to narrow those down to two from every state. And so they typically take one math and one science at the national level.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thanks for supporting us. Absolutely. And if y'all ever needed anything at all, you're welcome at Rollins Elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Board, and good evening, Dr. Cleveland. I am very, very excited to talk about the teacher that I have to my left. This is Mrs. Alyssa Henley. But before I introduce her, I just want to talk a little bit about gifted education, what it means to be in gifted education and partake in those services and what it means to be a gifted facilitator. Gifted education is a K-12 program. And I want you to just even kind of think about maybe when you were in school, what was the face of gifted education? Or if you even have children who are in gifted education, what does that mean? And I have a feeling that it means several different things to several different people. I think gifted education has shifted over the years in what it means and how we serve students. And all this is going to be pulling in why Mrs. Henley is here and why we're awarding her because it has turned into maybe something that would have been considered very one-dimensional to something that's very multifaceted, very complex, very personalized, very individualized as far as how we're serving the students and how we're going to continue to serve the students who are identified as gifted. Even in how we have identified and how we are identifying gifted students has changed dramatically over the years. And this is something I'm very passionate about. It is something that I've kind of come in late into as far as my career. But it is absolutely fascinating and it's a population of students that is something that needs attention. And I appreciate you giving us this attention and being able to celebrate Mrs. Henley today. So going back to Mrs. Henley, when we're thinking about curriculum and instruction and what that means in gifted education, just like every student, it's not a one-size-fits-all program by any stretch of the imagination. And in fact, I'm sure you've heard of HQIM. And there is not an HQIM for gifted education. We derive a lot from HQIM through extensions, through Question 4. We make sure that we're able to provide students with that kind of work. But we also make sure that we are providing enrichments. I think Ms. Cabot came back in. Yep, she did. So we also have enrichments that are available to students that might need something a little bit more, a little bit different. And we also are providing acceleration. There, when you think of what services or what those kinds of services could look like, there are many different categories of how we're serving students who are high-achieving or who may be gifted. So we have a teacher like Mrs. Henley who we get to celebrate. This is a state award. We have two major gifted organizations in Arkansas. We have A G I A and we have Agit. Springdale School District this year is the most winningest school district in Arkansas when it comes to our students and our teachers and our administrators. So with that, I do want to introduce a very, very, very special teacher. She is a middle school GT facilitator. And her approach to curriculum and how she differentiates, how she personalizes it, how she uses the data to make sure that she is having her students go to the next step is why we are here celebrating her today. So with that said, I want to introduce Mrs. Alyssa Henley.
Hello, friends. I want to tell you a little bit about this curriculum and what we do, but I also want to recognize Dr. Plumley. She's phenomenal and she's been an amazing leader for all of us. So the award that was given is to content that was called Brand Me. And a lot of people know that I've been in education for 20 years, but what they don't know is my background is in the business world. I actually started out in marketing and public relations and I was Vice President of Public Relations before coming into education. And so as I traveled down this pathway of education, I wore many hats. But one thing I noticed is my heart just fell for secondary kids. And by secondary, I mean the middle level. That was what I loved. You know, they're at a crossroads and they're trying to figure out who they are and they don't know. They pretend a little sometimes, but it's because they don't know yet. You know, I'm going to try this out, I'm going to try that out and see where I fit. And so what I did is I created, again, based on 20 years of just observations and past experience, an interdisciplinary unit called Brand Me. And I wanted to support Springdale Public Schools' career pathways. And so the foundation was Family and Consumer Science. It's a fashion design class. But we also pulled in entrepreneurship and marketing and engineering and design thinking and technology and digital media. And so this is a year-long curriculum. We use data to pull kids and we also used interest and ability and where they wanted to head in life. The reason this class was so phenomenal for me to experience was, again, it was an outcropping of my heart. But we took kids and we taught them about just branding in general. And then we taught them, you are a brand and everything you stand for is a brand. And then we taught them about companies and how companies use brands. And we cut that up into logo design and how logo design has three main elements. Psychology of color, text psychology or typeface, and also symbolism. And how you can look at a logo and have a feeling that that company wants you to feel immediately just by looking at the logo. And so we taught kids about that and they did really deep searches. And then we asked them, who do you want to be? And kids know who they want to be. They don't always, just like we don't always make the right choice in who we want to be, but they know, they have a goal. And so they chose three adjectives to describe who they want to be to all stakeholders, parents, siblings, friends, all communities. And they stood firm in that. Once they decided that and we had really deep talks about it, we then discussed the psychology. So if you want to be courageous, we looked at symbols that statistically are proven to be courageous, like a lion. They didn't get to choose cute little logos that they wanted. Believe me, they tried, right? Okay, but we stuck with the data. And so they didn't get to choose pink because it's their favorite color. They learned about color psychology. And they were stuck to use these elements so that when they finally designed this logo, it truly did represent who they were as a person and who they wanted to be. A beautiful part about this as well is we took companies who maybe have fallen short in public relations and we talked about repairing brands. Because in middle school, sometimes we fall short of our expectations and we feel stuck with the brand that we've been given. But we taught them how companies come out of it and how they have the power to come out of that brand as well and to create a new brand and a new image. So I could go on and on. I could literally talk about this for an hour. We did a lot of data analysis. We did a lot of polling of the community. But they all ended up with a final logo that represented who they were. They put these logos on fashion elements, whether it was a jean jacket or coat or shoes. And then we celebrated one day by wearing them all together. And it was just really beautiful. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or?
I think I know why you won the award.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Is there a next step with the award?
I go next month to just accept it, yeah.
So I think, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Remind me which school?
I'm at J.O. Kelly Middle School. I'm so sorry, yes, J.O. Kelly.
Unfortunately, she won't be there long.
That is true. Yes.
Tell them where you're going.
My husband and I are moving to Cersei, Arkansas. He's accepted the head coaching position at Harding Academy, per football.
That's not acceptable. You have a few news for you, Josh.
Long, yes. And if you know anybody in Cersei, you can put in a good word for me. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland Board. So please note, I just added this slide. Hot off the press, as of 1:00 PM today, the accountability system changed slightly and so what I had planned to present changed. I'm expecting it to change again, but this is the newest information and so I hope it flows like I had originally intended it to. I want to give you a little bit of background. A year ago, almost, we assessed our students and we did receive the Atlas results. We received scores, but we didn't quite know what those scores meant. In the fall of 2024, they decided to start bringing people together and start saying, how do we identify an A through F? Now we're in spring of 2025 and our goal is by April 15th, we're hoping to get the results of our A through F score that the students did a year ago. So we're hoping to receive those. It will be right after we receive our scores for this year, so they'll be back-to-back. And then in the fall of 2025, they're hoping to start getting on a routine so this information is provided early. One of the things that I just heard, that there might be some new legislation where the schools may be held harmless for this year. So we'll be looking for that. The other thing that was suggested is they might find a score for the schools using the old matrix and the new matrix and then giving the schools the better of the two. Or it could just be a score. We're not sure. So more to come on that. One of the things that Desi is trying to do is to provide not just a letter grade, but why schools earn a certain letter grade. So if you'll notice, this is an example of something they're working toward, that a school will get an overall letter grade and then you'll see the components that make up that letter grade. So in this example, you will get a letter grade for achievement, growth. And if you're elementary, it will be in the lowest quartile or if you're secondary, it'll be success-ready graduate. So those are how they'll be sharing it with the community. One of the things we just heard was in previous years, our eighth and ninth grade, because they had a ninth-grade component, which means high school credit, they were considered a high school. With this new accountability, they should be moving to a middle school level and not a high school level. We're not really sure what that means because that reduces the number of high schools in the state and it increases the number of middle schools. So we're really not sure what that will entail moving forward.
Do you know what the reasoning behind it?
Because the high schools, we used to have SQSS as a component and the junior highs had some components. Those components are now gone. So they don't have any of the components of a high school. So they're shifting them down. I'm going to go through the next two slides a little quicker. You'll notice on the left, this is elementary and middle school. You'll see how they were previously assessed. And then on the right, you'll see the future of how they'll be assessed, which I'll go in a little deeper. One thing I want you to notice, achievement is 33%, growth is 33%, and now they've added this new thing called the bottom of, the growth of the bottom quartile. So you'll kind of see how that's broken down. One thing that is important to notice in the blue on the very top, it says percent of students scoring a 3 and a 4. And I'll explain what that means in just a minute. In terms of our high school accountability, you can see on the left, there was four components. And now they've shifted to the achievement, the growth, and the success-ready graduate. So this has changed just slightly as of a couple hours ago. You'll notice that they've actually changed what success-ready graduate means. And I'm going to show you how they break that down. So this was just new three hours ago. So what they want us to think about is nine cells. So I want you to look at the middle column where it says elementary and middle school. If you count the three blue, the three light green, and the three dark green, that is nine different cells. Each one of those cells will be 100 points and that will make up the school's score. And those will be the components that they'll break apart and give a letter grade for independently. What is important to know in the difference is in the past, achievement, we earned points for students that were a Level 2, 3, and 4. And I have a very specific example I'll share with you. It has changed to only Level 3s and 4 earning points. That will be a big impact on a lot of districts across Arkansas. The growth in the past have been math and English and ELPA. They've now added signs to both achievement and growth. So now that's part of the accountability. And the bottom quartile is a brand-new rubric we've never used before. And what they'll tell schools to do is you take your students from top to bottom and rank them based on their scores, achievement scores, and you look at the bottom quartile of those students to see if you're actually growing those students. And that will be 33% of an elementary's score. If you'll notice, the high school is very similar. However, when you start going to the bottom green and bottom two pink, it has a different point. So you'll notice they also have a bottom quartile. But then you'll also see four-year graduation rate as part of that. And also, you've probably been hearing about graduate of merit or distinction. And that will be also a component of that. So I'm going to stop just for a second and say, are there any questions about these different things? I will say one big impact is our students excel on ELPA. And we earn a lot of growth points for ELPA. So in the past, ELPA for some schools was almost 25% of their grade.
Does the English language proficiency?
Thank you, yes, the English language proficiency test that our English language learners take. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. And now it's going to be put in one of the cells with ELA. So that means ELA achievement and growth goes down a little bit and ELPA's not worth as much as it's been in the past. So that will have a significant impact, I think, in our district.
Dr. Cleveland, is this that bottom group that counts? Just double, double the top ones?
Yeah.
Well, yes. Would you like to explain that?
Sure.
Because that can be good and bad.
So if you think about the bottom quartile of any subgroup, it really doesn't matter. They're going to count the whole 33%. Then they're going to count a fourth in each of the other groups. So that means it's going to have a substantial amount. That subgroup will have a substantial amount of weight overall in the school's overall score.
Is this the testing that the schools that are high achievers have earned all the money over the years?
Yes, that is for achievement and growth, yes.
There's still going to be that type of funding tied to this new system?
Yes, and so we've already received those amounts. Yes, yes. I think they were presented.
Did they get on?
Yes. Well, they provided us money for this year's scores. I'm not sure about moving forward, what those will look like. One of the things I do want to say is in the past, they would group all the schools based on high to low and then pick the top 5 and 10% to give money to. It wasn't proportionally divided among the grade bands. So they redistributed how they gave the money this year, which did impact our district. So when we celebrated them, I think last month, there was fewer, but that was just because of the reconfiguration of how they did that. Okay, so what I did want to share with you is we have very few reports that we're actually able to pull right now. So our principals are doing a phenomenal job looking at every piece of data they can to move their building forward. But I did want to share this. We have something called Insights and I pulled this report from that. This is Springdale Public Schools' value-added growth. That's that 33% and how we compare to the state. So if you'll notice, you can see the district and the state. And I know these are very small numbers because growth is a very small number. But what I really wanted to draw your attention to is the very bottom row. Please notice it's all green except for one. So we are doing better than the state in all areas. Algebra just slightly below the state in terms of growth. So we're doing some good things. Okay, one thing that you will have where you're sitting is a document. I just want to show you one impact that achievement will have and explain it just slightly. So this is just a random school. On the far left of this document, you'll see level one, level two, level three, level four. In the first section of this, you'll notice the old way and the new way, just so you can kind of get a comparison. But in previous years, level one, there was zero points given to level one. Level two, we received half a point per student, and level threes and fours, we received one point per student. Notice our level twos in this particular example, there is a large number of students in level two. Under the new accountability system, points are earned for only level threes and fours. So you can see the dramatic drop. This will be across the state. It's not just a Springdale thing. But when you go and take achievement and change how you're giving points, it makes a big change. And so that's why they have not created those cut scores yet. I did give you a handout of every school, so you could just compare the old method versus the new method. And again, this will be across Arkansas, so that will change. It's the percentage of students that would have earned a level two, three, and four in the first one. Yes, and we would say 20% difference in achievement. And what's been interesting is we've had conversations, and we've watched a lot of Zooms, and they'll tell you that a level three means a student has the basic foundational knowledge of whatever we're assessing, ELA math. However, and we assumed they would be giving us points for that, but they just said, nope, we're not going to do it unless a student meets that benchmark cut score. And so that was kind of news to us as it's been rolling out. One thing I don't have here is science, because it wasn't formatted the same way. So science will also be a component that fits into this, but this would be just comparing last year to this year. Any questions? Okay, so just, so now what? We're still learning. Principals have an in-depth knowledge of where every student is and how to move that student. So we've, our principals are doing amazing jobs. Our teachers, you can walk into a room and ask a teacher where a student is in their learning, and they can tell you. They can tell you where, based on all the testlets they are, where they are in math. So we're making some great strides. Desi also put this out, what do we focus on? We make sure that we focus on grade level instruction, make sure we review Atlas data. There is something new that's just come out called the performance level descriptors, which really digs down deep to what is a level one, what's a level two, what's a level three, what's a level four, so that teachers can make sure that they are teaching on level threes and level fours. And where are the students if they're not a level three and four, and how do we move them up? And then aligning HQIM, which we are massively in the middle of all that.
Is that talking about aligning the high-quality stuff within a school or across the district or?
So there's actually a couple things that have to happen for the alignment. You have to take your curriculum, you have to take your standards, you have to take your curriculum, and you have to take the state assessment and make sure they're all aligned at that level three. So this would be what we're doing across the district specifically for our elementary schools. Yes, so we have our new curriculum that you've been hearing about. We know what the standards are. We now know what the assessment looks like. Now we're aligning all the pieces using these tools. On the right side, more secondary, student success plans. You've heard us talk about use science, really embedding that in our student success plan, so they have a plan throughout high school and beyond. We also have alignment. Ms. Tisher's been working massive lengths with all the administrators to talk about what is merit and what does merit with distinction look like. You notice 33% is four-year graduation rate. We're right about where the standard is, or state is, or a little bit lower. So we know we've got to have a focus on where every student is to make sure we graduate them. And then also creating creative partnerships and scheduling. Okay. October, we should have our new rating scale all up and out. And then from that point on, we'll be moving forward with that system being in place, so we won't have to have two years of one score at a time. So any questions? Oh, I'll probably be back next month, or tomorrow, maybe. I don't know. We've, Ms. Tisher, I think we've presented this three times. I'm looking at my principals back there, and they're like, yep, yep, this is the first they've heard it. They just heard it two days ago, and now they're going to hear a new version. So any questions? Right, thank you.
Good evening. I have a brief legislative update for you. As you know, the legislative session began about a month ago. We've had a few bills start trickling through. I expect this next month will be extremely busy as we start really getting some bills moving through the system and filed. Dr. Cleveland has been in Little Rock at least once every week advocating vigorously to support our students in the district and to support you all as a school board. I'm going to highlight just a few bills that are out there. If you're interested in seeing all of the education-related bills that, for example, AAEA is tracking, I'm happy to share that document with you. You know, the scope is pretty big, because they're looking at anything that may affect funding, teacher retirement, anything like that. So I've just highlighted a few for you. The first, you may have seen some news articles about the House Bill 1180, which is referred to as the Baby Olivia video. So that bill would require beginning in fifth grade and every year thereafter, a discussion about human growth and development that includes, at a minimum, watching a high-definition ultrasound that's at least three minutes long and watching this Baby Olivia video. I linked it there. If anyone is interested in watching it, you can also just search it up on YouTube. This bill made it out of the House, but got hung up yesterday in the Senate Education Committee, where there was some discussion about the need for it, about the accuracy of the video, things like that. So I expect that it will find its way back to Senate Education Agenda, and we'll go from there and see what that looks like. The main concern from our point of view is if it's passed, how is it implemented? You know, fifth grade, every fifth grade is in the class. The teacher could do something like that. But what does that look like at the high school level when every student may not be taking a health class, things like that? So we'll keep you updated on that one, and it's one that's getting quite a bit of media attention, so you'll see some in the news.
Will it be the same?
Yes.
In fifth grade, you're going to watch it again as a sophomore?
I mean, yes. I think you would have some flexibility on the high-definition ultrasound, because that's not a specific one that's prescribed. I don't know where you find those, but I'm sure they're available somewhere. But the Baby Olivia video is specific. So it would be the same Baby Olivia video every year. Yeah.
Is this every school or only public schools?
Oh, it's public schools. Yes.
Just thought I'd ask.
Good question. Okay, I do like these hearts up here. It makes everything feel brighter and cheerier. House Bill 1236 would allow employees to be released from their contracts up until May 15th. If you'll remember, over the last year or so, most districts in Arkansas largely as a result of some things that changed in LEARNS, started getting their contracts out much earlier. Well, there's an old law in place that says, once you've signed your contract, well, it's after 30 days after the end of the school year, or 10 days after you sign the contract. You can't get out of your contract unless the other public school district releases you. So we would get in these situations where people would be coming to Dr. Cleveland saying, you know, I really want to be released from the contract. And we would work out a lot of times where that would work. This would specifically allow employees on their own, without permission from their superintendent, to be released from a contract that they may have signed early up until May 15th. And I'm talking about contracts for the following school year. So timing of this is not terrible. We saw a version of it at one point that I believe had it as July 1st, and that was just really too late for our staffing purposes. Then there was a version that had it the Friday before Memorial Day, and it landed on May 15th. And this one's made it all the way through the House and is at the Senate. I expect it will pass here in the next few days. The foundation funding amounts, both House Bill 1312, sorry, that's a run together there, and Senate Bill 149, proposed foundation funding amounts for 2526 and 2627 are listed there. Again, I think that will proceed as expected through both chambers.
Those are the sister bills. Last time, the House had a different recommendation than the Senate, and so I think that's why they both decided to do their own. And whichever one makes it last, actually, will be the bill, will become the act, because whichever one is voted on last the governor signs is the one that supersedes the first.
Right, but they have the same amounts in them, so if something happens in one or the other, it won't be a kind of a who gets in there last type thing.
What's the difference from current?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask that. What's current foundation funding amount?
Yes, 71.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
House Bill 1370 is an interesting one. It is sponsored by Representative Mayberry, and it would allow districts to petition the Secretary of Education for five AMI days after they used their five built-in makeup days. Remember, with LEARNS, we went away from the AMI. This would potentially move it back, and it would count the AMI as in-person days that would count towards the 178 days or 1,068 hours. So essentially, a push to bring back AMI days up to five, after five had already, have already been used. It hasn't gone anywhere yet, but we're still early, so we'll see what happens with that. And I wonder if the amount of winter weather that we have over the next few weeks will influence anybody's position on it. Senate Bill 59, this one's gotten some press as well, has made it through the Senate. It would provide free breakfast upon request to students regardless of their pay status. I believe there's some funding for this coming from
What do they call officially, marijuana bill?
Yes, that's it, the marijuana bill. So I expect this one in the next few days will push on through. Senate Bill 90, this bill has gone through a couple of amendments. I believe Dr. Cleveland's hoping for a couple more amendments as it goes through. It would require allowing public comment at board meetings, which you all do. The change for you all would be it would have to be before any business is conducted or an executive session is had. So for us, that would move it to the beginning of the meeting, where we're typically doing our celebrations, rather than having it at the end of the meeting. Some conversation around this bill includes it allows any member of the public. One of the suggestions is that the public comment be limited to either patrons of the district, or so either residents of the district or people with students in the district, so that we don't find ourselves in a position of, for example, national advocacy groups being able to show up and get that same opportunity for public comment. Originally, there was a time limit in the bill, but that has been removed. But you get the idea, kind of of the general idea of where she wants to go with this, and we'll keep you updated, obviously, on any changes that we need to make moving forward.
Do you know if anything on the agenda is considered business?
That's one of the questions. You know,
I think celebrations would be business.
I know. In my mind, business is when you have to take action on something. But you know, our celebrations are each agenda item, so I don't know if that's considered business. So that's one of the conversations that's being had on exactly where is this anticipated to be? Because I don't know that every district does the celebrations like we do. They may just all jump right in. So that's one of the questions that we're asking of what does business mean? Is it an action item, or is it just the first item on the agenda? Right.
There's a lot of different
Yeah.
But having talked to Senator, her position is this. If someone reads the agenda 24 hours in advance, and they're a member of the community, and they have a question or a comment about something on the agenda, she believes that someone should be able to come to the board meeting, and before the board communicates or makes a decision about a particular agenda item, they should be able to say their piece about that particular item. Now, from my perspective, that would be like someone up in the gallery at the House or the Senate being able to come down to the well and saying their piece before they're evoked. And that's just not how that works. So they have committees where the public can come in and speak. That's appropriate. They sign up, just like you're able to sign up in other places. But a school board meeting is the school board's meeting that's held in public, just like the Senate and the House can be. That's held in public, but it's their meeting. So there are different, there are different conversations across the state, across the nation about what constitutes meeting and when things are appropriate. We have patron shelf, we have all kinds of other places. Ask questions, we want that, survey. And I obviously think it's appropriate for public input. I think it's a good thing. But it's just how it's done, and I think some bad actors have taken place across the history, maybe in the state where people have different levels of concern about being able to communicate. And so she just has this idea, and she's a senator, and she can bring it up. So she's doing that.
Is there a, because she doesn't have a time limit, or do we still set the time limit, or can we still, or does it have to be?
I believe we would still have that authority to both set the time limit. One of the things that I wonder is some school districts limit the overall period of public comment as well. So for example, if you said everybody gets two minutes, and the maximum amount of public comment we'll hear in an evening will be one hour, whether we would have some restrictions like that? And the bill is not specific enough that says, yes, we can or can't. So my position at this point is that you all could make a policy that does outline some of that, as long as the bill itself is followed, which allows for public comment before business or executive session.
Senator English has been very open to listen, so I appreciate that, Governor.
Yeah, I think this bill has already had three different amendments. So to me, that shows input and kind of a process of getting it to where it needs to be. Okay, this one's been in the news as well, the Bell-to-Bell-No-Cell Act. You know, not all the, not all the bills have catchy names, but I like this one. It's not an act yet. It's still just a bill. But it would prohibit the possession of personal devices, meaning cell phones, smartwatches, personal tablets, et cetera, during the school day, which means from when students are required to be at school in the morning till when they leave school in the afternoon. It has made it through the Senate, now at the House. Some questions that I have about it, what does possession look like? Is that in a pocket, in a backpack? Does it have to be somewhere else? The sponsor has indicated that he wants to leave that up to school districts to define what possession looks like. And then also questions, personal devices, I believe means those owned that came from your home. But we want to make sure that it doesn't get so expansive that it would include a student's Chromebook that they're using for school, which in our district is their personal one for school, because they're all assigned one-to-one devices. But not much change to what we've done this school year. It would limit at the junior high and high school levels, those lunch, at junior high and lunch and passing periods at high school. But we've, we've kind of already moved that way, so if this goes into effect, it won't be that much of a change. And Senate Bill 89 requires posting school board agendas before meetings. There is discussion about timing on this. When the bill originally came out, it required within 24 hours between both regular and special meetings, which regular meetings is fine, and we put it out earlier anyway. Special meetings only have to be called two hours in advance. And so when one law only requires two hours to call a special meeting, but another law requires that an agenda for a special meeting be posted 24 hours in advance, those don't work together. work together. So I believe they're working on some amendments to make those changes for special meetings. It would also require approved minutes to be posted within 24 hours. So that would mean today you approved last month's minutes. It would need to be on our website within 24 hours. Names, emails, terms and zones of board members have to be, would have to be posted to the website. We already do that anyway. So again, I think this is a result of some bad actors that, you know, now we're going to have legislation about mostly practices that we already do. Okay, that's the end of the legislative update. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, I just got a text message from Mike Hernandez and he said, I'd asked him earlier in the day, when he expected the LEARNs 2.0, our Ed Miltrop, he said he's here and it's going to be Friday.
Okay, stay tuned.
Good evening, Board. I'm hopefully going to speak somewhat intelligently about legal things, but not as intelligently as Ms. Kendrick Clay. So we're going to talk a little bit about cybersecurity and privacy law. And this is all acts from 2023, but the reason that I'm bringing them up is because it gives us a, a stage for where we are now. It's in progress and what's, what's happened since these were all released. And so we'll start with the, and these are out of order, so I know any of you who are OCD or have kind of issues with that. The reason they're out of order is because it makes more sense in explaining them that way. So 510 is the first one. And so it talks about the, all of the cybersecurity policies and guidelines that we implement within the district are intended to be private. So those aren't subject to FOIA or any kind of public display. So they're not going to be posted digitally, they're not going to be put out there for public consent or review or anything like that. They're protected because it's part of protecting our infrastructure. So that's what Act 510 is all about. Then we go to Act 754, which talks all about PII or Personally Identifiable Information. And so the state of Arkansas partnered with A4L or Access for Learning to basically hold our software providers or anybody that we go into contract with liable for how they protect our data or how they use our data. And so there's a 20-page document, basically, that we, we sign with each of our vendors, each of our software partners, or anybody for that matter who uses PII that we provide. And so all of that is documented, it's available if anybody requests it to show who we're partnering with, what data we're providing them, and all of that's, it's kind of corralled in the A4L platform. And so that's what 754 is all about. And then 846 is the state of Arkansas self-funded cybersecurity insurance to the maximum amount of $100,000 per incident. And so the Cyber Response Board dictates how much they're going to get you, to give you, and that's based on how prepared you are for a cybersecurity incident. And so we've got a requirement of a 48-hour reporting to the state for any kind of incident that occurs within the district. And I'm hoping that there's some, some leeway on that for times when we're off contract or different things like that, because it's going to be a little, little bit of a stretch to get to that 48-hour timeframe. So we're still working through some of that, but the reason that I put this one before 504 is because the, the requirements for 846 directly correlate to 504. And so 504 is the state cybersecurity office developed, and I've got a copy of it right here. And obviously, since I said at the beginning, this policy is not digitally published anywhere, so I'll, and I'll let you guys pass that around. So that's the, that's the state cybersecurity policy that was recently published. And so any changes to that policy are published on October 1st of each even-numbered year. And so it'll biannually be updated based on any kind of changes that happen. And so we'll spend a little bit of time talking about Act 504. And so the Department of Education developed this cybersecurity policy for us to be used for all educational institutions so that they can bolster cybersecurity and make student data. And so they understood that. And so what they did is they broke it into three different sections. And so the three different sections will be required to comply with on July 1 of each of the next three years. And so this is a schedule for the, the controls from that cybersecurity policy. And so Phase 1 will be effective this July 1 and then Phase 2 and Phase 3 each subsequent year. And the controls are listed there for each of the different parts that we're to comply with. And we can, you know, we're not required to stop once we get to the first six. We can continue to progress as we feel comfortable once we've established those policies. And so the first six in Phase 1, I've got listed here. And just to give you an idea of the scope of this whole process that we've been going through is this is the, well, here, let me skip to the next page and I'll give you some background on that. So Act 504, state of Arkansas developed the policy. It's up to each individual district to develop the standards and procedures to comply with the policy. And so the standards and procedures are also protected information, and so we're not going to share that with the public because that's specific details on how we're complying with the cybersecurity policy. And so quite a few people got together to develop a template for school districts to use to have as a resource to start the process of compliance with all of these controls from the policy. And so I have the Identification and Authentication Standard, which is just one of the six controls that we're supposed to comply with, and it's five pages of procedures that we're supposed to do. And this is just the template that part of these working groups developed. And so the, the different groups that developed these policies consisted of the Arkansas Cooperative Technology Coordinators, TLR, which is the AAEA group for technology leaders, and then the Cyber Incident Response Team from the state, and several different state organizations all got together. And we've been working since July of last year to develop this template. And we've got this template developed for each of the six controls that are due by July 1. So we've spent the last six months kind of working on how we can get a template in place for all these smaller districts to be able to use because a lot of them don't have the same skill set, they don't have the same resources, they don't have the same personnel. And so it's really difficult for them to comply with this without some sort of starting point. And so I appreciate the, the partnership of all these different organizations to give us a template to start with. And so next steps for this, we just recently had the TLR conference where we introduced the templates and we had several breakout sessions to talk about those specifically. And then there'll be regional trainings that are over the next few months to talk about the different controls. So I'll be attending the one March 6 at the Co-op. And if we want to have somebody from the state come and talk to our team directly, Dr. Cleveland, we can absolutely schedule that. And then it's our responsibility within the district to put together a working group, review the policy, develop and finalize the standards and procedures for the district, which we can use the templates that we already have. And then it will be the opportunity for the board to adopt it as our practice. So I know that was a lot, but do any of you have any questions?
One of those acts, you mentioned there was $100,000 worth of...
Cybersecurity insurance? Yes, sir.
I'm assuming we pay a premium for that to the state?
We don't, that's free.
It's free?
So the, the cybersecurity insurance is free for us to use as long as we're in compliance with the rules that they ask us to be in, in compliance with.
Can we get more than that if we deem that is necessary? I mean, a district as big as ours has $100,000 in...
It's not going to go very far. And we, we can, we can seek our own insurance in addition to that. That's absolutely allowed. That's just something that the state put out there for everybody to utilize.
Are we comfortable with that? I'm sorry.
Well...
Do we have a cyber, a cyber policy right now?
We don't. That's what we're developing from this. And so I, realistically, and Mr. Bell can attest to this, like $100,000 isn't going to go very far in terms of a cybersecurity incident. And so, you know, we're, we're doing the best that we can to secure the district as well as we can with the resources and the team and the, what we have available to us. There's always going to be new threats and new people that are, are interested in accessing student information. The, I appreciate all these policies because they're, they're designed to protect student information. Student's data is one of the most desirable pieces of information that any bad actor can get, just because if a hacker, for lack of a better term, gets a student's information early on, so kindergarten, first, second grade, they get to utilize that information until that student graduates high school and then applies for a credit card or a student loan. And then they find out they're $4 million in debt and don't know what to do with themselves because somebody's been using their identity for the last 10 years. You know, and so those are disposable. People use those, they throw it away, they pick up another one, they buy them in bulk, and they're used for all kinds of things. So it's definitely something that, that we need to put a priority on to make sure that we're securing this data.
Do we have a cybersecurity company that we...
We don't. No, we're, we're doing this all in-house.
We have DIS.
We do. We have, DIS is a great partner. And all these people across the bottom are great partners to have. The cybersecurity, or the Cyber Incident Response Team is pretty, they're pretty skilled at what they do. They've been to a lot of training to, to make sure that they can support us. And so the state has done a great job of making sure that they implement a team of people that can come in and assist us if we need it.
If you do get the policy though, are you still able to tap into that first $100,000 before they start to pay up or is it...
It's my understanding that we would be able to utilize that as long as we're in compliance with the stipulations that are attached to it, which are these first six controls. So that's why these were developed along with Act 846, is so that we'd be in compliance with the requirements for the cybersecurity insurance from the state.
So if someone hacks into our system and locks it up and demands $5 million to unlock it, is that considered a cybersecurity...
Oh, absolutely.
...incident where the, I mean, $100,000 is...
It's going to be, right, right. So in, in that instance, my first phone call would be to the Incident Response Team to, you know, give me extra hands to be able to work through the problem. Any other questions? You can, yes. Yep. Any other questions?
I think that we have to have all of this.
It, it is a lot, but I think that it's important and I think that it's, it's good that the state is partnering with us to, to give us the opportunity to be better, you know, and to protect student data better. So I appreciate their efforts.
We thought it was important for him to be able to be okay. Would he really tell our public that you're doing a good job and we can always work on that? But I think this is a new front. I had text messages today from, I don't know who, trying to get information from me. Or this fan or whatever. But not everybody does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. Tonight, I'll be giving just a brief safety report on a couple of items. Couple of weeks ago, on January 28th, we were informed by DESI that we'd be receiving $1,136,464 as part of the 2005 DESI School Safety Grant. We're currently working, I was wondering why I couldn't see that paper? I need these things right here. We're currently working on completing the required survey and grant application. And the purpose of this application is to assess our district's progress in meeting the LEARNs Act requirements and school safety grant priorities. In addition, these funds can be used to reimburse the district for safety purchases made after July 1, 2024 to present. The application deadline is February 28th and the deadline to have all of these, $1,136,464 spent is June 30th, which of this year, which is fast approaching.
That's quick.
That's very fast. On this slide, you'll see priority-approved expenditures as well as additional-approved expenditures. And priority-approved expenditures must be completed at all 31 sites before you can move on to additional-approved expenditures. So you can see there on, I wish this had a little laser thing. Does it have a little laser? Oh, yes, it does. That's great. So on this one here, you can see on priority-approved expenditures, this would include fencing, locks for all classrooms, vision panels, bleeding control materials and AEDs, intercom, two-way communication, visitor management, safety measures, and so on and so forth. Just to give you a quick example of that, locks for all classrooms, done. Check that off the list. We can mark done on all, on all buildings. Another one, grand master key, done. Visible signage is on school campuses that, and it's really about visitor requirements, about the ID that you have to show, and also the closed campus areas and traffic flow, done. So there's probably six on this side here that we already, that we have already completed. And then there's probably three or four that we're still working on. Then we'll move over here to additional-approved expenditures. But we have to be complete in all of these areas A through L before we can even move over here to any of these items. Next, I want to talk about our district piloting the Chea Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems. This system uses low-intensity electromagnetic fields to detect barrels and blades while ignoring everyday items like cell phones, water bottles, keys, and much more. It's safe for all medical devices, implanted devices such as pacemakers, any kind of medical device, it's perfectly safe for those. And it will alert to computers, iPads, and you can see other things on that list, three-ring binders, umbrellas, inhalers. And it's just because of the, the way that the, those devices were manufactured. So computers, for example, have the, like a cylinder in it that makes the computer open up, so it's detecting that barrel shape. The iPad, same thing, they have some components in there, three-ring binders, that's the same type of thing, the barrel shape. Umbrellas, same thing, inhalers, lipstick, believe it or not, that's that barrel shape. It can be a plastic piece and it wouldn't detect it, but if it's a metal lipstick container, it's going to detect that. Wads of pins, we found that out just by using these systems and then just some other things, soda cans, and then steel toe boots. These systems are really, I, I believe, just a really nice system because they allow 3,600 guests per hour to go through those systems. So it's, you're just walking normal through those systems, one at a time, one in front of the other, no divesting, so you don't have to take your belts off, you don't have to take your change out of your pockets and your keys and all that, it'll ignore all of those things. And they only weigh 25 pounds, so we can set one up in less than 10 minutes, a whole system, which has been really nice. Next piece is, here's kind of what it looks like when, let's just say this is the entryway to an athletic event and they would come in, they would funnel through here and everyone would just keep walking. If it alerts, it'll do an... If it alerts, it'll do an audio alert plus a light on the top and this C S S O officer would just ask the person to go to secondary, which would be right here. They would take anything out of their purse or pockets that might be setting off the machine, then they would take the purse and go back through, gather their things, and move forward. It's probably about a three percent, um, just the last two times that we've done it at two games, we've had about three percent of our guests that had to go to secondary, which is a very small, um, portion of those guests. Um, also, so far this year, we piloted a S H S, uh, basketball game and the Harbor High School basketball game and then you can see those three events that are, uh, moving forward. Uh, S H S Regional Wrestling Tournament and the Harbor versus S H S Basketball Game at Harbor High School. And then we're in preparation for the state basketball tournament that will be on March third through the eighth. Some of the patron comments that we had, uh, well, first and foremost, you know, when we were training on these machines, really anybody that knows me knows that I wanted five-star customer service. I wanted it to be a really good experience, no different than Chick-fil-A. You walk through the thing and it's our own brand for that. So I wanted people to have a really great experience. Uh, we hand-selected the staff that were going to be operating the machines and we got comments, lots of comments like this. That was easy. Thank you for keeping us all safe. I walked through and didn't even know I'd walked through. I mean, a lot of people were walking into games and what are they doing? Their other friends had their head down, they were just walking in and they walked up to the counter, they didn't even know they'd walked through a, a weapons detection system. So, and then I really liked that we were using these machines, had a lot of great comments, a lot of positive, um, feedback from the, our community. And then here's what they look like. We did purchase sleeves to just make them a little more approachable. You can see the archers here. If, you, you can kind of see at the bottom, down there at the very bottom, they're just gray poles and they're pretty cold and sterile, well, you can see especially right there on the, on the Springdale High School, right there at the bottom. But they're pretty, you know, it's just a kind of a sterile look, but when you put these sleeves on them, they have a really nice, approachable look to them and we've had a lot of positive feedback from that. Do any of you have any questions about the grant or the Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems?
How many systems do we have?
We have three functional systems right now. And we found that one system at Harbor is, will be, we had two set up that night at the Harbor game, but the next time we do this, we'll only have one because it was plenty. To, one system will handle thirty-six hundred people an hour. There's no hour between three-thirty and let's say nine-thirty that thirty-six hundred people come through. So it's pretty easy. But now at Springdale, they have two entry points and so we'll have to continue to set up one on the west and one on the east.
Is there a state tournament?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll definitely have two at the state tournament, for sure. Any questions?
I have a general safety.
Yeah.
General safety question.
Yes, sir.
School zone signs. How do, do we audit those functionality of lights?
Are you talking about like the flashing signs?
Yeah.
That's a city issue. Um, we will partner with the city to get those installed if they need to be installed, but we've always, I've always worked with Jeremy on getting those installed.
They install and then it's theirs.
Right.
Did I say that right?
We heard you say install.
Is that part of our routine safety checks or evaluations?
Uh, it has not been, but it can be if it needs to be.
Yeah, I notice there's some, there's some areas that, I mean, you, you know, traffic today is.
Sure.
It's a challenge, right?
Horrendous, yeah.
And then you get in these long school lines waiting to pick up or drop off and typically they're sitting, oh, that whole line of traffic is sitting next to where a sign is and people fly out on the other side.
You can't even see it, right.
You're not really seeing that because it's so congested now.
Sure.
I know. Obvious congestion, looking.
Usually.
Functionality of current, what we have and if we need to improve on others.
The only time I've even addressed those is when it's brought to my attention. Somebody will call either a, a community member or a crosswalk guard or a principal.
I don't have anything specific.
Okay. Yeah, we, we absolutely can check into that. Sure. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Do you all try actually, you know, hidden weapons, hiding weapons?
Say that one more time.
Do you all actually try hiding weapons and walking through this?
Yeah, the, there's a lot of little cool features that I didn't talk to you about, but they have a block and it has, um, weapon simulations in the, it's like a, I don't know, block of plastic and you walk through at three different levels. So you'll walk through here at your waist level and at your ankle and you'll go through both directions as a calibration before you start an event like this, so that you're a hundred percent sure that it's going to pick up any weapon on either side of your body as well. So yes, we do calibrate them each time that we use them. Any other questions? Okay, do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
There's your famous science teacher.
Now, let's see if I can get the tech to work from here.
Make sure that microphone.
Yes. Sorry, yes. Usually I push the microphone away. Uh, good evening, Board. I'm Cassie Kautzer and I am here as the current, um, chairperson for our Certified Policies Committee, um, just bringing forward some information, um, for you to consider about calendar options for, uh, for next year. So in, linked in your agenda were the calendar options A and B, um, once we got a working copy of that. Um, and so we've got, I know I can do this. Ha ha, found the right button. Um, so you've got a, a copy of those calendars that were linked in the agenda, but, um, we as a certified P P C tried to start this year, um, really getting feedback, um, more widely across the district than I feel like we've done in the past, um, just knowing that everybody's got different aspects they're looking for and we had talked a lot at P P C about making sure we are hearing from representatives at elementary through secondary, so we're meeting the needs of all of our schools, um, and not just, um, one area. So, um, the breakdown of two different calendars, uh, that you can see for A and B really came after we, um, sent out a district-wide survey, um, asking teachers to kind of share some of the priorities and where, um, more than fifty percent, only, we had only about five hundred teachers, um, responded back to that survey, about fifty percent were from the elementary level, um, and the rest was divided above that. Some of the top priorities were, um, or the to, the highest-rated priority was trying to have students and teachers done prior to that Memorial Day holiday, um, with a lot of comments just being about it gets late after testing, um, students not being as, as inattentive, um, and then if we have inclement weather that we're making up for snow days, needing to, um, have time for that before we're too far into the summer. Another big request this year was, um, finding time during the day, um, for conferences, um, both in the fall and spring for some extra parent, uh, contact time, um, uh, for those parents that can't make it on the evening or for even, uh, school staff that are trying to make it, do their students' conferences as well as make it to their own children's. Um, and so we really tried to consider as many, um, needs as possible, resulting in the two calendars beforehand. Um, Calendar A, um, you saw is a Monday start in early August. Um, we tried to keep, um, the number of days per semester as equivalent as possible while following all of the rules and guidelines for that, um, and, and, uh, just prior to, um, Memorial Day weekend, um, if there are no snow days to make up. Calendar B came about because, um, particularly on the elementary end, um, teachers were wanting a option for a midweek start, um, just that that first full week back of five days being really difficult for, um, elementary students and being tired in particular. Um, and so that option came out there as well. Um, everything else, um, most, um, days and holidays, flex days, P D. that was put in was kept, um, about the same and so I had just highlighted on there, on both of those calendars for y'all the differences to see. Uh, then just over a week ago, we sent out, um, on the thirty-first of January, um, for a district vote and heard back from a few hundred more teachers than we did last year, so seventeen hundred responses. Um, and you can see that overwhelmingly that, uh, over seventy-five or just over seventy-five percent, um, of teachers were asking for Calendar Option A as their priority.
Were the teachers that wanted the elementary?
Um, so that actually in talking to, um, Dr. Byford, uh, because I'm over at Hellstern, she had said, I'm really curious what the breakdown would be and so, um, I haven't brought that up, but that may come out on next year's survey to see, um, you know, just, um, again, still anonymous, but what, what age ranges we're seeing there. Uh, because with as many teachers as we had seen feedback from asking for that midweek start, I was surprised that Calendar B option was as low as it was. Any other questions or anything that I can answer while you consider those calendars?
Thank you for putting all this together. This is very helpful.
You're welcome.
It's hard to work on time, isn't it?
Yes, yep. And always know it is, but until you get down and look at it and you email, I must have emailed Dr. Smith, I don't know, fifteen times going, okay, I think they're right now, but my eyes are going blurry, will you check? And then I'd get one back saying, oh, I think we've got to change this and so, yep.
How many teachers make up the?
Um, so P P C, we've got at least one representative from every school along with several, um, administrative representatives. Um, and then for our calendar committee, uh, that is an, it is an additional step, like Dr. Cleveland said, there's a lot of steps with that and so that is optional meetings. And, um, I want to say there were eight or twelve of us that started meeting back in November, um, starting to break things down, um, and that's kind of the core group that went back, um, back and forth with that. And we did find it helpful this year to send out a survey ahead of time to the whole district, uh, because then we had people's feedback ahead of time. And so when questions came later, we said, well, we can consider that next fall, but like we've got to go on the data that we have for right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions?
I will make a motion to approve, um, Calendar A. That's what seventy-five, almost seventy-six percent of the district wants, so I'm not going to argue with seventy-six percent of our employees that it affects, so.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve Calendar A for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The best.
Good work.
Thank you, Lord.
Dr. Cleveland. Um, the first thing on my, um, agenda, uh, my section of the agenda is approval of the financial statements for the month of July, July, January. I'm sorry. I've, I've been back there freezing, so I think I'm dreaming of summertime air conditioning. So as part of your packet, you received the financial summary for January. I just wanted to point out a few things. Um, collections are low, you're going to see that they're low, January, February, March, that's pretty consistent. The bills for, um, your, uh, taxes generally go out March first, so, um, we anticipate that that's going to be low for those months. Um, the next thing, we are okay on our collection rate as far as our revenues as a percentage that's been collected to date. We're at about sixty-one point seventy-nine percent, which is a little more than where we were this same time last year. Um, we're still on target as to where I think we should be at the end of the year and I also wanted to note that our operating funds are just a little bit less than a million dollars ahead of where they were at this same time last year. So are there any questions on the financial statements?
I make a motion that we get approved of January twenty.
Twenty-five? Twenty-five? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Financials.
Just a little typo. A motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Ombi to approve the January twenty-twenty-five financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The best.
Thank you. The next item for consideration is a resolution to approve the, oh, I'm sorry, to seek board approval to purchase property located at seventeen-two-seventy-three East Highway four-twelve. In your board packet, there was a copy of the appraisal report and also a copy of the related resolution. Dr. Cleveland, did you?
Yeah, I sent all of you quite a lot of different information. Ms. Winters is a property owner that owns a home, it's Mount Buildings on the corner of four-twelve in front of Sonora Elementary School. We have a, a maintenance building that we call the Donut Shop. It used to be the Donut Shop years ago, kind of crossed from Dollar General. It's approximately an acre in size, give or take. I think it's point nine-five of an acre. Uh, the county has it at point nine-eight, but I think there's a section of the road that actually takes it into one-twelve and then the Sonora Road there, but, uh, you know how property does that, goes to the middle of the road. So it's roughly an acre, but she, uh, reached out to us and said, would you be interested in the property? Well, it's large enough that it could potentially be commercial property and, which could be gas station, could be anything. So I was pleased that she gave us first opportunity. So anyway, I ordered an appraisal, which she agreed to, to pay half of the appraisal. She went ahead and I guess solicited with the, with the realtor and they listed at four-hundred, the appraisal came back at three-seventy-five and I told her that we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, pay above the appraisal, but felt that it was worth that, um, provided the offer and acceptance with the condition that the board would have to approve. I told her that I didn't have any idea what the board may do, but certainly it is the, it is a good, I think, idea to round out our acreage and protect that corner. You know, right across the street, it was a really nice farm and now there's a, I guess it's a car lot or something, I'm not really sure what's over there. And then Dollar General's also there and so it's, it's a very congested area. My farm's just on pass and oftentimes there are multiple wrecks and so protecting that corner, I think, also protects our kids and our families. So it's an opportunity for us.
What is this corner, doll?
That is a little piece of property that is, I think, must have been when Sonora Road came through, someone else's property. Uh, Ms. Brothers is here too and she's helped us kind of acquire the potential of this property. Do you have, would you like to come and may have information about it?
I can't see what they're saying, so.
Okay, it's on the appraisal, we're looking at the appraisal. So it's on page four and it shows the outline of the property. Uh, there's a small little picture, I'll show you.
Here, I'll show you.
There's a small little piece of property.
Corner at the top, doll properties.
About where the stoplight is.
And I would, this is, this may not be accurate a hundred percent with the, because this looks like it was pulled off of maybe, uh, it could have been a county, it could have been Land, Land Glide or something like that, because, and a lot of times these names on here are not accurate. My guess is the way it's drawn and with the, that it's probably actually right-of-way that belongs to Arkansas State Highway Commission, um, or something that was taken, because all of that was taken right there for the widening of, of Sonora, um, of the road there. But I can find out on what exactly that is.
That's not very much, but.
No.
For that not to be part of the property.
And, and I might be able to, just get my phone real quick. I don't know.
Okay. We're talking about these two. Yeah. That is, that's on our phone. No, it's really kind of a waste of service. It's not the biggest problem ever.
I bet it's just outdated.
That's what I'm thinking. My money is on it's outdated, but I could do some research and.
I mean, we definitely, I mean, at least I would like to approve it, but, you know, we also need to know what that is.
We have maintenance there. Where's the school? Probably. So we, our property joins that on two sides. And the road at four-twelve.
That's probably on.
Yes. Yes. This is a church across the. We bought that from Dale.
I think it'd be a lot of different things to see errors with all that, yeah.
It was heartbeat stop.
So she just came across and asked us.
So Jeremy, so on that, a stoplight there and there's all these controls right there, my guess is, based on the way it looks, it's just a guess, um, that it's probably highway farm or something.
For all those stuff.
Something, yeah, right-of-way, something like that, um.
It just hasn't changed.
And it just hasn't changed on that map, because those maps are almost always incorrect on the names. It can be years and the names will still be passed out there and stuff, but I'd be happy once again to, to do some research and try to figure out what that will.
So unless there's something crazy, that does make the corner. I mean, that.
My understanding is that it's my entire, that was my understanding and I had not seen this document, this, this particular picture until just now and noticed that, so. seen this document, this particular picture until just now, and noticed that.
We go ahead.
If I'm on the site now, it does show and all. So I'm sure they didn't file something along the lines, says no properties of N W A.
And I'd have to then do that research on, you know, was that a little sliver or something that was left, was not, been all of that at some point, and then was that little piece left off for some reason? That's also why we get title insurance, you know, they'll do search and make sure all that, but.
Thank you. Any indication if they'll take the three-seventy-five? They've accepted the offer, pending more. I asked the same question.
Yeah, they, they did accept the offer at three-seventy-five, and the end, and inside there also is, they did pay the, about the twelve fifty, their half of the appraisal. And I'll do research on this and get back to Dr. Cleveland and whoever, figure out what that piece is. And then we can, if it is owned by somebody, we can prove it.
Yeah, I don't think they can do much with it.
So I mean, it's a room that, that, yeah.
If it's not highway, then I would say that'd be a good question to ask, is if they want to do it.
Sorry, put you on the spot.
Okay, we need the motion.
I'll move that we move forward with the resolution, giving the superintendent permission to purchase the property at seventeen-two-seventy-three East Highway four twelve.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the purchase of property located at seventeen-two-seventy-three East Highway four twelve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Closing dates in March?
Um, I believe it was in March seventeen.
Okay, pretty quick.
We did the inspection on Monday.
Just real quick, what's the plan for the existing building there, the house? Are you, we just going to take it down, or do you have plans yet for it?
Not just yet, we'll probably rent it for a while.
Yeah, make some money.
No, Ms. Winters lives there, but she's moving to New Orleans, so it's, it's nice.
Yeah, she lives there, and then there's a little, there's a garage, it's sort of like a tiny house that her son is growing.
So we'll probably be able to sell what we can of maybe the tiny house we were at, but Jeremy's going to have a plan for that. Certainly, we have teacher space, you know, places that.
I draw other Sundays and I'll check.
He probably has ten plans by now.
Oh, Jeremy can make a plan, let me trust him.
Properties going to start growing.
But yeah, you know, as we buy things, we'll, those things mature, so we'll have an opportunity to express that.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Paul, appreciate you.
The next item on my agenda is to consider a resolution to approve a related party transactions with vendor Mr. Luis Alfaro Tapia. He provides DJ services, he's a school employee. We think that the estimated amount for a year would be around eight hundred dollars. So in your packet, you had the Form B, which is his disclosure form, and then also the related resolution.
Make a motion to approve the related party transactions with Luis Alfaro Tapia?
I have a motion by Mr. Ramos and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the related party transaction for Mr. Tapia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is to seek board approval for the proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-six through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven, and approve the related sample ballot. I want to give you just a little bit of background on this. It's to, it's required that we do it prior to the annual school election that will be held in May of twenty-twenty-five. It has to be done sixty days prior and then published in the local newspaper. We will be publishing the budget documents with the school tax rate at the current millage rate of thirty-nine point eight. This tax levy is the same rate that was approved by special election in May of two thousand and eleven, minus the rollback that was required as a result of the reappraisals that were done in Washington County in twenty-twenty-three and Benton County in twenty-twenty-four. So this proposed budget is based on our projection of expenditures during the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year at the current millage rate. The act of publishing this budget is an action required to comply with Arkansas constitutional provisions relative to the ad valorem tax. So just wanted to give you a little background on that. Sir?
Very old law, very old.
Yes.
Was two thousand and eleven the last time we had a millage increase?
That's my understanding, there was a special election at that point.
I know, I'm just, I can't believe it's been that long.
That's when it was set at forty and a half, we did have an election to extend it.
Right. Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed budget of expenditures.
A second.
A motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the proposed budget of expenditures, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the very last item I have, Dr. Cleveland asked me to kind of give you an update on where we are in our audit process, and that's the audit of our fiscal year financial statements as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. And so this process started in mid-November. At that point, I was working with the auditors to schedule a time for them to be onsite. We currently use H C J CPAs in Little Rock, and I know some of y'all have met Ms. Sarah Gentry, she's the one that usually comes and does the presentation to the board. So at the beginning point in November, they started looking at like what our revenues were, what would constitute materiality based on our financial statements, and they also did a selection of what federal programs would, they would select for testing and doing more substantiated procedures, pulling payroll records, pulling actual checks, and looking at the documentation. They were onsite with us from December second through the sixth, they usually come for one week, they bring about, it varies, we start the week with three auditors, by the end of the week, we'll have five. And so we're, we, they send me a list prior to coming, so we actually have the downstairs, break room is kind of already covered with documents when they come in for them to review. So then once they use, they review the documents that would be very difficult for us to scan and upload, like our Amazon bill or credit card statement, that's, you know, two binders full. So they go ahead and review all of that. Once they leave, they create a shared file where I can go in and see what questions they've asked or what documents they need, and then I can upload it to that, and then we can talk in the comment section back and forth and provide additional information. So at the present time, all the requested documents and explanations have been submitted to them. Internally, probably where they are is all the field work has been completed, and then it's going through the review process through their senior audit staff. And so sometimes they will reach back out and need clarification on something that maybe one of the field auditors maybe didn't ask the question or didn't document it, or, you know, just some follow-up periodically. So right now, I haven't had any questions, but that doesn't mean that I won't in the next few days. I've not had any indication from them as yet of any audit concerns. Typically, if they see anything, they kind of give me a little bit of a heads up that are, and they're asking more questions. We haven't had any of that to this point. So last year, they were here in March to present the audit report. There are some timing deadlines that has to, like, for instance, that audit report has to be submitted to the state by March thirty-first, so I anticipate that they will be at our next board meeting. And so just wanted to give you a little information.
I think I have emailed you an email I received from them, so I just need to answer those questions.
Yes, if you'll just give them a call, they'll just walk you through, that's just part of the standard procedure. They ask Dr. Cleveland those questions, they ask me those questions, they'll ask.
You're in trouble. I didn't get those.
Yeah.
I think it's just Nick. Nice knowing you. Too many meals while you're there.
So are there any other questions for me? That's all I have. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Board, Dr. Cleveland.
Kind of getting hot in here.
I know. It's hard to make everybody happy. I've got a construction update. So at Central Junior High Phase Three, they've got a lot of the interior walls, they're, they're doing finishes, so they've got interior walls painted, tiles completed, ceiling grids in, ceiling tiles are all in. This is in the, used to be the cafeteria, it's going to be the library. They're actually floating the floor out, getting ready to install the L B T. They're doing a lot of the infrastructure for the electronics. This is one of their career ed rooms. They've got pretty much all the finishes done except the floor. And then they've actually did, they got the paving done yesterday on that northeast parking lot. So I talked to Bobby today, they're going to go ahead and let buses use that to exit out on Gutten Sound if, if, if they want to. The job trailer, they'll be moving that out in two weeks, on February twenty-eighth is the day that job trailer gets moved out, and they're taking up the laydown area and getting that back to green space. Do you guys have any questions on Central? So also, we did, at Central, last week, we started the one-year walkthrough for the warranty on Phase One. We got halfway done, we're going to do the other half on the seventeenth, and, and that'll complete that, that year warranty walk. And usually, we'll have a few items that'll need repaired or replaced, you know, after this walk happens, so. We also, last week, we did the one-year walk at Springdale High School Arena and Academic Wing, so it's, it's been a year. They found a few items, and they've already started repairing those items. At the Professional Development Center, we've got the new walls going in upstairs. We've had our crew go in, and they started, did the initial grind on the floors on the second floor, they got that done Monday. They did the in-wall electrical inspection today. They're getting ready to start cutting in exterior windows on the second floor, and then the painters are starting to prep the area on the first floor to paint the, the ceiling grid and all the walls. At the Industrial Arts Building, we finalized with the city, we're having to add a storm shelter in that building, so we got those plans finalized, working with the architect to get those drawn in and ready to send off for the state's final approval on, on that project. We are able to move forward, so actually tomorrow, we're going to saw cut the floor and, and get ready to, to install the new C M U walls and everything in that building. And then at Springdale and Harbor, the baseball walls, those are going good, they've got all the back, back stop poles in, they're actually painted at Harbor. We're just waiting on the weather to cooperate, we'll get the nets up and then finish up some of the gates. And then the Harbor will be completed, and then Springdale High will follow up right behind it. They still have a little bit of sprinkler work to do at Springdale High to get that functioning, since we added the, the warning track, we're having to move the sprinkler heads out of that warning track area. So those are getting relocated, they're doing that work this week. And then they're doing a lot of the top caps and the gates at both facilities. So they'll finish up right in time for season to start.
When is that? When does season start?
Uh, the first game's at Springdale High, I think it's on the twenty-eighth, and then the first game at Harbor's like on the third or fourth. So we've got those, we've got those dates, and so we're just trying to stay, stay in front of that.
On the backside of those walls, the new walls that we've got, what you see as you're driving by?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it's going to be, or is there, are those enclosed some way, or is that what you see is what you get?
That's, that's what those panels look like. They still got kickers to add on that fence to, to keep, especially at Harbor for the wind, to keep those strong. And then we're going to work on a plan on screening to do, kind of like we did on the, the bleachers and stuff over there, some kind of netting that has, you know, yeah.
Harbor wall.
Yeah. We've got, we're going to work on that in-house once that job's done.
So it'll be post, like what you see at Shallows Fields that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, about every ten feet, it'll have a kicker down, just, just to support that wall, because it is solid, it'll catch a lot of, of wind. And then on the...
You never have to replace them, they'll outlive all of us.
Yeah, yeah, they're really stout fences. On the flashing school lights that you had asked about, we do work with the city and Springdale P D, anytime we have issues with traffic flow, usually Springdale P D, they come out, they help us get a, any ways we can improve, or if we need to have a traffic study done through the city, and try to get it.
Well, if you drive around and look at them, some are just old and faded, and some have lights, some don't have lights, and.
Yeah.
Just popped in my mind, thinking, how do we, how do we manage that?
Yeah, so.
There's a lot of schools, a lot of signs.
Yeah, so we, we purchase them, the city, we partner with the city, they install them, and then our guys have to maintain them. So they're looking, they're having to go change times on time change, and, you know, so we're constantly monitoring it. The schools do a really good job. If they fail during the day, they let us know, and we can go get them fixed. We always keep extra parts on hand to, to keep those working. And, and some of ours are so old, we're, we're actually having to change out to a newer LED type signs, and just always trying to add them where we can, so.
Like you're on it.
We try. Do you guys have any other questions on construction?
Is Central still on schedule? When are we going to occupy that and start using it?
Um, Central, it's on schedule, it'll be in April. Yep, we're still, still on schedule there on, on everything.
Couple months of the semester, they'll get to use it.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're probably ahead of schedule, they'll have some outside work to do, but the building, I mean, once they get the flooring down, a lot of that will be complete.
I was going to ask you also, Southern Brothers, they're doing, are they assisting your crews at both the P and C buildings?
Yeah.
Lock?
Yeah, so the, the old after-school program building and the lock building that we purchased, Southern Brothers and, and then my crew are working together. So we're doing the portions we can do to save money, and then they're, they're filling in the, the gaps.
Small company, remember John English, John used to work for, like, we really liked John?
Yeah. Yeah, and the timing, we, we started those, the timing was good in the wintertime. My guys have more time in, in the winter, winter months, so it's worked out good. A lot of our portion has been done. We did all the demo, and then we're actually going to saw cut the floors and, and take that concrete out starting tomorrow at the lock, and then hand it back over to John to start putting up the new C M U walls and, and everything, and then, then we'll, we'll bump back in on those jobs, you know, on both of them at certain times. I'll have electricians and H VAC plumbers and stuff.
That's the first building that we're going to have to do, that hardened area. We've not had to do that before, which will be fine, they figured out a way to do it.
Yeah.
Like the, I'll call it storm shelter, it's really a hardened space.
Yeah.
Sorry, Pastor House, it could be, yes, just that building.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, overalls came on. It's a problem. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and Board. Valerie is under the weather and couldn't make it this evening. However, my name is Callie Day. Hello. On behalf of us both, thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for showing us, or for offering us the opportunity and allowing us to participate in the Minority and Women's Leadership Conference last month. We enjoyed that immensely. We had the privilege to collaborate with educators from across the nation and to sit under the teachings of some pretty incredible and inspirational humans. We had opportunities to work on creative projects and discussion panels and even collaboratively create a video that our AEA president at the state level requested permission to use for a promo in the future. We discussed the impact of certain pieces of legislation, and NEA and AEA are keeping us abreast of new items and their implications for education as they are introduced. We also were extremely excited and encouraged at the opportunity that we had to meet privately with the heads of the AAPI, Indigenous, and Hispanic caucuses to collaborate on ways to better support our unique and beautiful community. We're still in touch with them and are working together to create resources that can actually be used across the country. Also want to thank Ms. Clay for presenting the legislative update. We want to add to that an encouragement for everyone to look up the numbers of their own legislators and save them in their phone contacts so that it is super easy to give them a call and request their votes. You don't have to look that up every time. Moving on to the present, I stand before you tonight as many things. Vice President of Springdale Education Association, a shameless Swifty, a member of the Springdale community, a somewhat grieving and befuddled AFC Chiefs fan, yet also an excited NFC Eagles fan, a descendant of both colonizers and the colonized, a daughter, a sister, and a friend. But there's one role unlike any other, and it usually sounds like, "Miss?" I'm a Springdale teacher. This is not news to you, as I have had the privilege of working alongside you all for numerous years now. Due to recent events, the scope of that role is a bit of a balancing act. Education was once called the great equalizer. This phrase was coined by Horace Mann, a 19th century American education reformer who believed that access to quality education could level the playing field for people regardless of their socioeconomic background, essentially acting as a force to equalize opportunities in society. While we know it's not quite as simple as a clever turn of phrase can make it sound, largely due to the intersectionality of systemic disparities across history, geography, and power, it still rings mostly true. And right now, it seems that we have entered into a time where decisions are being made that indicate a belief that only certain groups deserve that quality education and a fair shot at opportunities that it provides. We're in a time where a colleague was discussing with students this week, a guest author being rescheduled because, quote, "It looks like we may have ice this week," referring to weather, and panic crossed the faces of the students before she quickly clarified, "No, no, 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 ice from the sky." In Springdale, education and immigration are deeply intertwined because of our beautiful, vibrant community. To commit ourselves to educating these students, we must also commit to knowing not only our own rights as educators, but theirs as minors such as FERPA, and for many, as immigrants as well, so that we can calmly and confidently tell them, "I've got you," reminding them that they are safe in a sanctuary of learning, not at risk in an institution of fear or punishment. Arkansas unfortunately knows what it means to sometimes be on the wrong side of history. We've seen scars of schools that once closed their doors to children of color and still see remnants of white hoods that should exist only as ghosts. You can still drive by Roar and Jerome, Arkansas, where immigrants and citizens of Japanese descent were interned per Executive Order 9066. And yet we also know that history's heroes, the household names we celebrate today, were the ones who were just like us, everyday people with busy lives and to-do lists, but who decided to stand up, who stood firm on their convictions about our national decree that all are created equal. We know the weight of words and laws that sought to erase identities and silence voices because we were taught those parts of history, but coming generations may not if we allow certain parts to be written to make it more palatable. So I ask, what histories are being written about today? Standing is not a foreign concept to educators. We do it all day, every day. But we are being called now to stand not only before our students, but for them, hand in hand with our historical greats such as those, such as those like the Little Rock Nine. When policies arise that endanger our students, be it through censorship, underfunding, or exclusion, we must be the ones to lead, knowing that as the largest district in the state and other states in our nation are looking to us for direction. And our direction is clear. We move forward. Moving forward does not moving, does not mean moving alone. If we are to live in true community, we must make space for every voice, not just when it's convenient, not just when it aligns with the loudest political platform in our algorithm, but always, permanently, at every table where decisions are being made, representatives from every community in our district must be present, not as an afterthought or a token, but as a priority, because we truly value them. Because an education system that does not include the voices of those it serves is not a system of education at all, is a system of exclusion. Thankfully, here in Springdale, we've done a pretty good job of that, and others are looking to us, but we have to lead at the state level as well. We have a choice. I believe in this district. I chose this district intentionally. I believe in our teachers, our students, our family. I believe in our ability to be more than just bystanders in this moment in history. I believe that we can lead. In the words of George Washington via Lin-Manuel Miranda in his Broadway sensation, Hamilton, "History has its eyes on you." And years from now, when the next generation looks back on this time, they won't say that we were silent. They'll say we stood. They'll say we chose the right side of history. They'll say we saw them, and we fought for them, and we fought with them. They're watching us. Districts around the state are watching us. States around the nation are watching us. History is watching us. I will leave with this final quote from Dr. Ben Carson. "Freedom cannot last long without education, because an uneducated populace is likely to be duped by tyrants. An educated populace cannot easily be manipulated and is the foundation of a strong society." I thank you for each of your investments in Springdale, in our students, in our community, in the teachers here. I thank you for the email that you sent out, reminding us of our legal obligations to protect our kids. And I ask that we join hands and step forward together to lead in scary situations in front of our state. We are committed to y'all, to this community, and to, to our kids, more than anything. But thank you for what you've already done. Truly, thank you. And, yeah. If you have any questions.
Can you grab that shit? Patron comment, Ms. Christina. Want to come to the podium? As you're coming up, I'll just remind you, as a board, we can't take action on anything tonight. You can speak about your child, but please refrain from speaking about other students or district personnel by name. And I believe you have two minutes.
Okay. Well, first of all, my husband could not be here with me tonight, so I'm speaking on behalf of both of us. Our nine-year-old daughter was sexually assaulted at Young Elementary by another student in December. When we learned of this, we immediately filed a police report. We also notified the principal and the vice principal of that school, Young Elementary. We met with them in person the first Monday after we learned about this incident over a weekend. We set clear, transparent expectations with the principal and the guidance counselor that the student who assaulted our daughter by grabbing her vaginal area, he was to be nowhere close to her whatsoever. Separate homerooms, check. Recession, we'll talk to the teachers and let them know to keep the children separated until the CPS or police could notify the parents of the boy who assaulted her. Check. So we thought everything was good. The 17th of December, the principal of Young, she called me and told me that they could not make a clear determination of this video because the video quality was poor. Okay, fair enough. I've seen the video quality, and she is right, telling me that they could not make a determination at that time. By telling me that they could not make a determination at that time of seeing how the boy groped our nine-year-old daughter's vaginal area, that also tells me that they cannot impose any restrictions or even punishment against that child. Because if someone tells me that my daughter stole a piece of gum from Walmart, unless I see it, I'm not going to believe it. Okay, all right? But it doesn't mean it didn't happen. All right? I had a cup of coffee this morning, no breakfast, there's no video of it, but that doesn't mean that I didn't have that cup of coffee. Okay? Go on Christmas break, and then we come back on January 7th, and my daughter tells me that she's being forced to share an ELD classroom, special ed classroom, with the boy who sexually assaulted her, without my knowledge and without my consent, nor her father's. This is traumatizing, not just for me, but extremely traumatizing for a nine-year-old little girl who knows better, who knows her boundaries and knows that her body belongs to her and her only. I was livid. I called the school. I demanded to speak with the principal. I asked her, "Are you aware that my daughter's being forced to share this classroom with him? Yes, it's rendered by grade." Let me remind you of your conversation. You told me back on December 17th that just how he has to respect her boundaries and stay away from her? You need to talk with your daughter, Ms. Orissa, and tell her she needs to stay away from him. I did. Okay? Now, I have a problem with qualified immunity because of all this time trying to get charges of second-degree endangering the welfare of a minor to be brought up against them. Even the prosecuting attorney here tells me that I need to come and speak to our superintendent, that he's a good man. Well, guess what? This qualified immunity is the problem, and that's the reason why I can't bring legal charges up against the principal, vice principal, and the ELD teacher at the school. And then, this is a very important matter that all public needs to be made aware of. You want to cut me off and, and take away my first amendment right to speech and to notify everyone of this qualified immunity that first liberates all school officials from any legal responsibility, protect our children while they're at school, and it also protects and shields those same employees from any lawsuits whenever they commit egregious acts against our children. Did you guys not learn your lesson with Joseph Rollins and Mark Osterly? And now my child had to shed her-
Okay, we need to stop.
Hey, just adjourn the meeting.
My child had to shed her 14th Amendment right.
Wait till next time, please.
So with that, Ms. Wayne, these items, meeting goes adjourned.